Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call this regular meeting to order at seven. Uh, will the clerk please call roll?
Michael Rossi.
Here.
Beau Clark.
Here.
Ellen Dalbrin.
Here.
Eddie Albarino.
Here.
Michael Florio.
Here.
Cinzia Latieri is not able to attend. Jay Mandell.
Here.
Zach Cluard.
Here.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Robert Corson. Susan Marcus.
Here.
And Brian Pellegrini is also not able to attend.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll see Susan for uh, Cinzia. Then we have a forum. Um. Under Chair's comments, uh. The first thing I want to mention is everyone who uh, was elected last week, who, you know, to new terms. Make sure you get sworn in by November eighteenth. Okay, they, we are having a ceremony at Town Hall. It's sixteenth or seventeenth, you're able to attend that. Um, just keep that in mind. Um, the other thing, even though he's not here, I want to make sure that. Uh, since Bob uh, is not, didn't run for reelection, I want to. Uh, put it on the record that I want to thank him for his time here. Uh, he was a wonderful colleague. And, you know, I appreciate his service. Um, after that, uh, we had an, on the original agenda, an executive session as item ten. Um, our attorney, however, is not available tonight. So, uh, I would like to have a motion to remove item ten from the agenda. Which was the executive session and move it to the December eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five meeting agenda. So moved.
Well, second.
Oh, second.
Okay. You, you can pick one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. The motion carries. Okay, that's easy one. Um. Abby, did you want to talk about the housing bill now or wait?
We can do it. We can do it anytime, though.
Uh, why don't you, I mean, say, do it now?
Sure. So I'm sure folks have heard that the governor has called a special session for November twelfth. And one of the items on that special session is the proposed housing bill. So, uh, folks remember, um, HB five zero zero two that was not passed in the last session. Um, has been substantially revised. I have, it came out over the weekend. Um. I'm still sort of going through it, but some of the key points in it, some of, some of the major things that some of the smaller towns were most concerned about. Have been eliminated from the bill. Um, so I, whether or not, it, it, you know, it seems like there's a broad bipartisan support for the amended version. But some of the things that we express concern about here, um, like fair share numbers being dictated by the state. Um, now there'll be opportunities for the folks, for us to work with the cog to, to make sure that we're looking at more local numbers. Um, mandatory, there's been a reduction in, or it's, uh, some changes in, um, mandatory, sort of as a right permitting for, um. Multifamily homes up to nine, nine units. So there's, there's some changes there. Um, some reductions in required parking and exemptions from parking that, that folks were sort of worried about it. They were happening in downtown areas. Um, and folks are going to be sort of automatically exempt for parking. Some of those have gone away. Um, I'm trying to go other, other key, key points. Some of the discretionary funding piece and, um, and in terms of punitive elements. Um, if you were not opted in or had, didn't have the right planning documents in place, you would not be eligible for discretionary funding. That has gone away and there's a separate housing fund being established, um, for folks who opt into certain things. There will be, um, sort of housing production plans that are required of folks to, to do. But there, you can also do that, um, through your cog as well. So there are much more support in place. Um, you know, and sort of a recognition that, that smaller communities, especially those that don't have a physical infrastructure in place like wastewater. To accommodate some of the, um, anticipated changes from the original language. They've, they've made some pretty substantial changes in that direction. Um, so there's more discretionary items and then we'll go from there. As I know, Laura, I would share with you kind of how it pans out. Um, but it's, it's a long journey.
I think, um, I'm sorry.
Nothing relevant. Um, so when would this go into effect?
So it's staggered. Some things are effect from pa- in effect from passage. Some are January first and some are July first in a way that it's currently written. Um, so it's about a hundred page bill. I can email out the link to folks if they're interested and, and provide, yeah, I'm definitely do that.
That would like get negate some of the things we just put into the P O C D to qualify for discretionary funding?
No, not necessarily. These, these things are not at odds at all. Um, in fact, some of the T O D, you know, transit oriented development elements that we've been looking at. And the town's participation in, um, the, the C M D A through, through David Corus's office. All those things will actually march us closer to, to compliance with the bill. So it's, it, we're not so far off from where this is all headed anyway. Um, so I think we're sort of in line and this kind of gives us a little bit more control.
All right.
Abby, were you going to, uh, put together a summary of the, of the, really the, the parts that most affect us?
So I, yeah, I can. And what I'll do, I'll probably pull from C C M and, and cost to do that, just because they're much more on top of things. And like I said, the, the, the press release just came out Friday afternoon and then Friday morning, um, and then the, the bill itself came out over the weekend. So it's kind of a quickly evolving, but I will give you much more information. Yeah.
Thanks very much. Yeah. And my top level examination of it suggested that we had. A lot of options about whether to do something as a town or through the cog.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we don't necessarily have to be part of the cog. We could.
Right. We have, we have a lot of discretion in that. Yeah. So if we need the resources, they are there. If we want to do things on our own, that is also essential. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, item three. Uh. Uh, minutes. Uh, so we, uh, can, in a motion to, uh. For the approval of the October sixth, twenty twenty-five, uh, meeting minutes. So move.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Then.
Well, I'm sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um. Uh, now we have the public hearing. Uh, do you have a, what do you, or any of these new, yeah, there's some news. So we should have our notice of public hearing.
Yes. The, uh, Town Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. To consider the following. E Z C twenty-five nine Mahin, dash, special exception modification, change of use. To allow residential on the first and second floors of units one and four. Pursuant to section twenty-seven dot two dot three and twenty-seven dot two dot four of the Clinton zoning regulations. At one point fifty-one East Main Street. Unit one, map seven, block sixty-two, lot seventeen A. Zone, okay, East Main Street, oh, the zone East Main Street, uh, Village District, E M V D. Applicant Tony Bolduc, commissary students and associates A. Uh, E Z C twenty-five twenty, special exception to relocate. Box church pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point fifty C. Of the Clinton zoning regulations at one Heritage Park Road, map seventy-seven. Block fifty-nine, lot H dash nine A, zone I two, applicant William Walter Benish. At set hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The applicants and correspondents are available. For public inspection of the town's website. Anyone requiring special accommodation to participate in the public meeting. Should contact the land use office at eight six zero six six nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Town Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I apologize if I mispronounced, uh, Mr. Benish's name.
You're good.
Okay.
I do. Okay. Um, our first item on the public hearing agenda is actually a continuation. So that's, uh. Uh, P Z C twenty-five dash sixteen, the text amendment to section three, addition to section twelve and section twenty-seven. And a modification of section twenty-nine, Clinton Planning and Zoning Regulations to allow residential adaptive reuse. To existing structures for the purpose of multiple dwelling units in the B two, B three and B four zone. Um, yeah, it is, uh. Matthew Williams, uh. We've had this hearing open, so, um, could you focus on what you've changed or updated? As we're involved with last month's discussion?
Yes, um. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. So I know there was concern about possible, possibility of somebody making changes, expanding buildings in a way that were not. Uh. Consistent with what the regulation is trying to do, which is allow Clinton to preserve its, you know, it's a, it's older architecture. And, uh, en masse, quite honestly. Um, and allow us to repurpose some of the buildings that are just not being underutilized. And we all know. Uh, what many of those are. And also provide just a modicum of housing opportunity, I think, which is another thing that we all know is, is. Coming at us whether, whether it's imposed or not. Um. So what I did here was I changed the section under standards. Where it talked about, um, how you are not allowed to expand the footprint except for life safety and stability reasons. Um, and I rewrote it and I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it yet, but, but it, what it does is it really puts the onus on the applicant. To make sure that the building is consistent with the original architecture and the general area. So it says, buildings proposed for residential adaptive reuse. Must maintain their historic appeal. Expansion and external changes in the building ought to remain within the existing building, building footprint. Or be limited to those needed for life safety or accessibility purposes. Any other proposed alteration, especially volume expansion. Must be compatible with its original character and strive to enhance the town center's identity as in store New England Village. Um, I said that to Abby the other day and she said, she thought that's exactly what you folks were. Were encouraging me to, to alter. Um, I hope that that. Um, makes some of the commission members more comfortable with this as a regulation. Um, I certainly can speak to some other issues that were brought up before, if you'd like me to, but I guess.
If it was something that we brought up before that you wanted to address.
Yeah, I think I would. I think one of the things, a couple of things, um, and I'll try to be brief about this. I'm not sure how many of you have known me over the years. Probably not them. Probably just Mike. And Ellen a little bit. Okay. So I've been around practicing in Clinton since nineteen ninety-one and made this my home. Lived here for a long time, moved to Madison, now moved back. Um, but I want to give you an idea because, you know, I think it, it maybe isn't understood. The depth of my understanding of the town, village and my professional experience, um. In this kind of a realm. So I'm just going to give you a quick list of things. Liberty Square, where Ace Hardware is, okay? That was our design, our concept, our massaging of regulation to make that project work. If anybody remembers the old Kenny stores, Mike, you and I are probably the only two who do. Um, that was a very important project that really was designed to enhance the village center. But I'm just going to rattle off a few things. When the police station was approved here, I was chairman of design review in Clinton. Twenty-seven West Main Street, the old Clinton Green Building, I'm the one who reimagined and redesigned that. Sixty-seven West Main, which is the development of four new buildings, mixed use, residential, commercial, um. Interpreting regulations and if needed or possible, adjusting them to make them work for a positive development is what I do and what we've always done. Um, seventy-three West Main Street is another one, which is just an apartment building, which is a few short years ago. The regulation allowed that in these zones. Not, maybe not the B three, but it certainly did in the, in the B, the B four, the B two. Um, Connecticut Water Company would be built buildings there. Shoreline Fitness Building, we designed and built that, which by the way, has a residential in it. Which is probably not even all that apparent when you look at the building. Um. A couple of other, you know, not so small projects, the hammocks. So when I started working on the hammocks in two thousand and four, there was no regulation. There was the, the rate, the commission that just made it R forty. And we designed a village and then we backward wrote the regulation. And we were fortunate enough that the commission at the time was really looking for a compromise to see a project like that go. And I think the hammocks, and hopefully all of you know where that is, um, has been a very successful thing to help raise the level of, um. Aesthetic appeal to the town of Clinton. Um, you know, this property that I'm here for, um, primarily that, that inspired this regular change or addition. And fourteen West Main Street is, um. You know, it's a classic example, the kind of building I don't think we want to lose. And I don't know that everybody understands eight thirty G, but I'll give you just a very quick visual. On what eight thirty G could do to that property. That's relevant. Yeah, I believe that's relevant, sir. It, it, well, uh, can I just. You got a regulation. We, we're not supposed to weigh one threat, if you will, against, this isn't a threat. And you know what? No, it's not. No, it's got nothing to do with it. I don't think this client would bring this.
I'm going to let you continue.
Yeah.
You. Point that we asked was. You know, why wouldn't you do an eight thirty G on these properties?
Well, no interest. I personally don't get involved in projects or very, you know, try to stay away from stuff like that. I don't do that. This isn't a threat. This is just an example. And the reason I bring it is the young lady who sat over on this side and then apparently she's not here tonight. She thought eight thirty G would solve, you know, would, would be just an easy way to do this. But I mean, I get calls from developers all the time. And this kind of a building, this big red square is what unfortunately we risk if. We don't give the mom and pop owner in our town the chance to make their project, their property work better for them. And that is the reason for it. This is in no way any kind of a threat. It has nothing to do with this. Honestly, this has nothing to do with this property. It is one example of what could happen and does happen in a, in a lot of locations. Is what's possible under eight thirty G. And I, I bring this up only because I got the sense that some members of the commission didn't realize. That the only way they can say no to an eight thirty G is health and safety. And it's very narrow what you can, what you can say. The septic system doesn't work. Or if the buildings are going to cause some kind of a safety hazard, those are the only two reasons you can say no to it. And I don't want to see these is the reason I put this up in front of you. And I think that this regulation will allow us to avoid that. Um, and so that's the reason I show that. I, I can't speak for Cinzia, obviously, but I, I do recall her sentiment on this and. And her feeling was that if we're going to abandon what we just, uh, what is in the current P O C D and also what is stated in the. Presented waiting for approval P O C D. To have strictly residential in the, in this zone, that we should have it as an eight thirty G to bolster our, uh, the affordability projects in the sound, ten in the town. And, and I quite frankly agree with that sentiment. I have a question because I'm not up on what the new P O C D says, okay, but. What I did hear her say, and, and you can tell me, fill me in. I mean, it's mixed use. Right? Or, or I think that's what she said is what you're trying to do in the center. Correct. Everybody knows and understands from a planning perspective, one-on-one, that that is what brings vitality. It supports businesses. It all works. And it has an aesthetic appeal. And, and I don't disagree with that. And I don't think that what this regulation would allow prevents mixed use. All it does is it lets older existing buildings be repurposed in a way where people might be more inclined to fix them up. And that's really what, that's really what it's about. I think that we have fourteen West Main is an unfortunate example. For many years it sat there. You know, um, and it's, you know, unfortunately, market conditions don't allow, you know, somebody to come in there and say, I want. Two or three stories of an old house for my business in. And I think that that's the reality of a lot of the properties. So. Um, I would hope that you would consider this amendment and hopefully feel that it gives you the flexibility. It, I mean, this is to me not a threatening regulation. I think previously when you allowed multifamily in the, in the B two. That was, you know, that was dramatic. You know, we saw a couple of apartment buildings go up. Um, and other things. And it kind of went in and it went out and it went back in and they came out again. I think it's over the last ten or twelve years. And, um, I think this is far more benign and I think it's much more responsible for trying to maintain the aesthetic of our town. So.
Um.
I think that's all I have to say. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, I would also, if it's. If it's possible, or I, I mean, I, I would like to hear if, if Abby, if you think it's pertinent, Mr. Chairman. I think as your professional. I haven't heard hers, give her sort of take on what, you know, is this an issue, this regulation to be proposed? And I think it might be, it might be helpful. That's, if you want to ask her, are you comfortable speaking?
I mean, I can, I can summarize where we've been. You know, I, I've seen adaptive reuse work well in, in places. And I think especially where there are challenging buildings that, that, you know, as, as Williams described, that, that don't necessarily lend themselves to commercial uses. It can be a way to reinvigorate those particular buildings and give people a reason.
Oh, fuck, look at that.
I don't know if they liked your proposal or not.
So, the, easy though. Um, so I, I think, and I think there's a couple of things, you know, I think we have a legal opinion and I know that there are certain opinions about the legal opinion. However, we did have our town attorney go through and look at this for consistency. Around how other communities are addressing adaptive reuse opportunities, whether it violates uniformity clauses, whether it's in, within the powers vested in the planning and zoning commission. It was where their power is there, right? So I think the question here is. Does the commission agree that the scope of this regulation is protective enough? To allow for reinvestment in targeted buildings without sort of opening the floodgates of a potential multifamily exclusively. Residential uses in the B two, B three and B four zone districts. Um, it's, it's written fairly narrowly here. Um, and I, I think it's that, that provision in which you have to show and demonstrate. The residential use and, and the historic residential use. Coupled with some of the, the new language about the aesthetic components and sort of making sure that that streetscape fabric is maintained. Um, but there is a fundamental question for the commission to answer of whether or not you are comfortable with first floor residential. Um, you know, uses in, in these commercial zones and in the, in these, these areas. Um. I don't know that it's necessarily a regulation that would be abused. I think eight thirty G perhaps provides much more of an open door for projects that wouldn't have the same architectural protections. Um, but we don't know what's coming. We, we, you know, it's speculation to know what may or may not be coming down the road. Um, and I think it's important, this, this particular regulation, while applicable perhaps to multiples, you know, older home. You know, residential, originally residential structures in these zones is primarily brought before you because it's, it would facilitate redevelopment of particular property. I think that's important, you know, to acknowledge, right? Um, and so that's something we get permission to consider as well. So. I've tried to say fairly neutral on the whole thing, but do I, do I think that this creates a harmful opportunity in the zoning regulations? No, I don't think it's harmful.
Before I, if you, uh, I. I was one of the people that was concerned about the aesthetic, uh, you know, this, you know, knock it down and just build on the same footprint. Uh, uh, attitude. Your new language, for me personally, um. Satisfied my, uh, my concern. Okay, I can't speak for the rest of the commission. Everybody's got to make up their own mind. But, um, I appreciate you taking the time to do that, Zach.
Yeah, I used, uh, in reviewing the revisions, uh, the one thing I have is, was it? Does this permit mixed use or is it a complete change in, um? In usage, as in like if it's a free level, like you said, can it still be like a commercial? Um, first floor with residential above it and such. Cause I mean, even the, just the product statement says a. A change of use of an existing structure. So is that like a blanket changeover?
My understanding was a blanket changeover.
Okay. I, I just, my comment with that would be, you know, we're, our idea is, as you mentioned, mixed use and, you know, maybe. Some sort of caveat in there per- permitting. That kind of mixed use as opposed to either commercial or residential will be something that might satisfy.
I, that's. Uh, uh, and my understanding of that was part of the reason for the, for this proposal is. That the, these structures in the applicant's mind aren't necessarily. Amenable to having the, a business on the first floor, for example.
I, I understand that and I understand, I'm not saying. Have the regulation only indicate mixed use. I'm saying. You know, the, uh, they were residential, now they're commercial, we want to bring them back to residential or mixed use.
I think under the current regulations, they can, they, they can stay with mixed use.
Oh, okay. That was my confusion with.
There are, there are provisions in the regulations that allow for accessory apartments within some of these, within some of these zones. Whether or not those particular standards meet the needs of this or other applicants is another piece. And sometimes finding the right commercial use on that first floor for some of these buildings is a challenge. And so I think this is just, it's a, it's a way to activate spaces that folks are having a hard time economically, having make sense as, as a commercial first floor.
It looks like we're getting ready to close the public hearing, but I have one more question for Mr. Matt.
Yeah, I'd love to probably speak to them. So you can go ahead.
So, not to set you up, um, but in my opinion. The fifty-year-old benchmark that you sent here is completely irrelevant and you yourself, you know, acknowledge it, it's arbitrary. If you look back at anything architecturally. Anything that we look to preserve is really, you're going to go back to Victorian area that ended roughly around nineteen hundred. We don't have any, any, uh, mid-century modern buildings that are considered here. We don't have any craftsmen's that are considered here. And there's nothing architecturally historic about anything from nineteen seventy-five. Uh, so with that, letting you know that I would, I would say that anything, you know, this should not have a fifty-year-old, first of all, it should have a. From a date prior, as opposed to floating on that period. But what was the date of this building? Construction? I don't, I'm not even sure. Four, I don't remember. I don't remember. And to be honest with you, it wasn't entirely, I'll tell you how that figure came out. Um, I was following as a guide, the regulation in Chester that I mentioned before. And they had twenty years, which I thought was very low. And I sent to Abby and she said, that's not right. And she recommended fifty. I mean, I. But you mentioned at the last public hearing that, that, that fifty was an arbitrary number, which has a lot of meaning because if you look at the. If you look at the case law that was submitted, that's one of the cases that was addressed. So that's an important point that I think we have to. I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of dated, or at least a few dated requirements in any regulation that are arbitrary. And one is the ninety-day appeal period for demolishing a building that, I can't remember what it is in town.
Nineteen forty-five.
Nineteen forty-five. So I mean, I, I didn't think that that was anything odd. I can tell you, I didn't calculate, I can't remember when this. The only reason I bring it up is because. Your, your stated purpose is to prefer, is to preserve historic rights. I don't see anything historic about a building I, as I mentioned prior to say, at the end of the Victorian area, which was right around the turn of the last century. And that's why I wanted to make that statement. I, I don't, this, I mean, I, I think in our southern New England villages, that's pretty consistent, you know, opinion. But I can tell you that determining now or arbitrarily what's historically significant, what isn't, can't really be done, I don't think, through specific eras. And, you know, there are, there are cities and towns in the country that are preserving mid-century modern stuff because they think it's the grandest thing. And there, there are some elements of that that actually are pretty, that are pretty nice. We don't have much or any of it around here. But, 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 you know, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think. Um, the thing that I think is maybe consistent is, you know, zoning regulation came in in nineteen sixty-five in Clinton. Is that correct?
And that would be my suggestion.
You know, make it predate zoning.
Yeah. Um, I think I would be, I was, I was going to ask you, would you consider? Um, if we had to have a conditional, a conditional approval.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
To, from fifty years to, that's the predate zoning.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think mid-fifties to early sixties is, the, it, you know, brought us a whole lot of peachy buildings either. But, but at least, at least it's pretty.
The reason I like that better was this is that. It was, these were residential before it was, we had.
That was the question I had with zoning, was this, this appears to be a residential structure from the beginning.
Right.
Why wouldn't this be a pre-existing noncon, why wouldn't this be pre-existing non-conforming?
Uses have been changed. There's, I don't believe there's any exclusively residential use established and that, that wasn't, it wasn't affirmatively changed at some point to include commercial uses. It's my understanding. So the use was, it wasn't as, the, the old use was abandoned at the time, the, the new use.
Understood, but what about the protection for non-conforming uses? Doesn't that, doesn't that give you the right to go back to its original use?
Well, they changed it. When they affirmatively changed it, that, that modified what was, what was your.
Basically, that's the.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, just for, just for clever here, this building was built in nineteen twenty.
As a, if, if I may, the gentleman's question about mixed use, but never my intent to exclude mixed use in this. I, I tried to keep it really simple because you look around, there's a lot of, you know, Ace Hardware, right? We've got Anami. We've got mercantile, right? We've got retail. So, so I think there's a lot of buildings that have mixed uses. And I never, I never imagined that this regulation would prevent or, or require that any particular building be R residential. That wasn't my intent. And I don't think Abby can speak to the interpretation of it, but.
Uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, ask if there's anyone in the audience tonight. We've got a good, good sized audience, but I think it's for a different application. Um, that would like to speak on this. Uh, either for or against this, uh, proposed amendment. Okay, just to let everybody know, I'm not seeing any, missing it. Um, okay. Is there any other questions from the commission? Okay, is there any other questions from the commission? I would, again, just to, just to reiterate, I I think I would like us to consider, I'm saying this before we close the public hearing, so we can say it. Make sure we consider possibly a condition changing the date to pre zoning or before zoning regulations came in, we'll get the exact date put in. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to conclude the public hearing. Second link, thank you. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Standing, motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we move on to item four B. Planning and zoning commission twenty five dash nineteen, special exception modification. Change of use to allow residential on first and second floor of units one and four pursuant to sections twenty seven point two, point three and twenty seven point two, point four between zoning regulations of one fifty one East Main Street. Before I have the applicant or anything come up, I do want to bring up something that's relevant here. That is that a very similar proposal was made two years ago and we turned it down. So one of the things that we have to consider is going to be whether or not what is being proposed here is significantly different than what we already denied. Okay, so just to make sure that's understood for everybody. Um, is there an agent or applicant here tonight?
Yes, there is. I'll take a spot over here.
Yeah, you're on camera, you got, we got you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Ainsworth. I'm an attorney. I have offices in New Haven. I live next door in Madison. It's my privilege tonight to represent Resink Property Solutions. They came before you previously and I'll address that issue that you raised first. That's probably the threshold issue for all of you. The applicant came to, they've got a multi-unit residential development, but it faces on Route one. And there was a historic building in the front and that needed to be preserved. That affected how the property would be shaped initially. And the applicant resisted that initially and then went along with the program, preserved the, the historic residential building is now residential. But there are two mixed-use commercial buildings on either side of units one and four that have shops below, residents above. So they are, they actually have residences in them. And this conversion is to convert the commercial units to residential for a couple of reasons, but I'll, I'll address whether this one's different from the last application. This application differs from the last one in that my client has reconfigured units one and four, the one, the subject properties to include additional parking. The reason that they came forward last time was that the commercial viability of the two units on the first floor was impaired by the fact that they didn't have enough parking. The only people who came up to approach them to occupy commercially, both rejected the idea because it was insufficient parking. There were only four spaces for each of those buildings. And one was an attorney, the attorney, the secretary, the bookkeeper, and then only one space for a client. If you've got a closing, then you have either an additional attorney, additional client, you just don't have enough spaces for that kind of use. And that's the kind of use that would use that. Same thing with a realty office, you're having a closing, same thing, you need more spaces than are, than are available. However, with residential, there would be sufficient spaces and my client reconfigured the buildings to add in two more spaces to try to make them commercially viable. They are in garages, so they reconfigured the buildings, add in a garage on each one of the units. Still insufficient for commercial. But it'll make the residential more compatible. And what they don't want to do is have the commercial and then have people try to park across the street of the bank, because they're going to be on the same days. Like if you were there on weekends and you needed it, fine, but they're going to be on, open on the same days, Monday through Friday, you're going to have that conflict or they're going to end up parking in one of the residential spaces in the development and taking up somebody else's residential spot. So you're going to have some sort of conflict if we continue to try to force commercials in this location. It's, I know that the, the goal of the town is to have commercial along Route one as much as possible and have that mixed use. There are parts of Route one where it really does work. This is at the far end and the eastern end. And it just doesn't work in this location. You've got a lot of residential down there. The residential does work. This does provide housing. And so what we tried to do was reconfigure it to make this a little bit more viable. And we come back with that change. That was as much as my client could do to fix the problem, but they couldn't fix the entire problem. If it stays commercial, those units are going to stay empty. That doesn't serve anybody's purpose because you want the activity. If you, if they get occupied by residential, then you've got two more customers or two more families and customers coming in for the residential, excuse me, the commercial that exists, and you've got fewer cars. So to answer your threshold question, the difference is my client actually reconfigured the buildings to add in additional garages. So we would, we would consider that a substantial difference or I think the, the the standard you're supposed to look at is, is this substantially the same? We would consider it not substantially the same, in fact materially different because there's been actually been a reconfiguration, try to comply and make it viable. And I think the idea here is to make the property work. Resink invested in the community. They want to make it work. And so their proposal is fairly modest. It's, it's just two of these units out of the entire development. So I'll stop there.
Here's my issue. If you don't have sufficient parking, that's your error. You should have done this when you designed it. You came before us with an application. On your application, you, you testified and demonstrated that you had sufficient parking. So now you're coming back and telling us that you don't. So why should the town suffer from your error?
Wasn't there at the time?
There was. If you're telling us now that it doesn't work, why doesn't it work? Because whoever designed it didn't design it properly.
I hear you. But we have to understand this was in, it was being designed in twenty twenty, came before you in twenty twenty one. At that time, things were vastly in flux and there was a lot more demand for even the difficult commercial. And you would have been able to find a tenant. These days, trying to occupy a commercial space is very, very difficult post, post the change in the environment.
I understand that, but I think that, you know, first of all, the buildings aren't completed yet, correct?
They've been redesigned, so no.
So it's, you know, kind of goes back to the old saying, it's hard to sell apples when you don't have them in the car. I just don't have sympathy for, for a design that is don't you have, you had additional parking, I believe, if I recall properly, there was additional parking for guests in the residential area towards the back, if I'm not mistaken.
So this is thirty five additional.
Yeah, thirty five additional, so why can't that be used?
Provided for overflow.
Well, when you talk about in back, that's one thing for guests, but but for people visiting commercial, they want to be able to go right into the commercial unit.
Understood, but if you have these additional spaces, you've just mentioned that you had an attorney and the attorney secretary and so on. Have them parking back so the clients could park in front. Pretty simple.
I, I just want to say something. When, when this application came before us last year, I was championing the cause to have a commercial on, on the, the lower level. I didn't realize that the residential aspect of that building had to be tied to the commercial area below. Which makes it almost impossible to find anybody that, because they've got to be able to live off their bill, their business, which can only serve some small handful of potential.
I don't believe that's accurate.
No, that's, that's not a condition, no, of this, of this approval.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so go ahead.
So you've got someone who runs a business, are, um, you're going to compete with other spaces. They're going to have to walk all the way to the back and walk all the way to the front to get to the commercial space. It's not going to be as attractive to them. I mean, it has to be practical. It has to work.
Okay, but again, that's your design that made it impractical. That the Clinton town and Clinton, the Clinton zoning regulations are specific where they say mixed use. That was a specific part of this agreement. If you designed it in an inappropriate manner, that's on you.
I, I hear you.
You could reassign some of the residential parking to those reserved spaces.
But, but again, our main point is is it, is it significantly different than what came before this before?
Well, that's the threshold question, yes.
That's, that's the.
So I suppose you can make that vote first, but I mean, I made my argument that they'd actually reconfigured the buildings to attempt to address the difficulty.
I think the attempt and it's, in theory, like a new prop, not literally a new property, but like a new issue, I think does meet the threshold question personally. To move forward, I mean, are we speaking about now the second part or are we waiting until we decide?
Well, we have, we have to decide whether it's substantially different.
Go ahead, Eddie.
He's muted. You're muted.
Eddie, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I understand your concerns and everything, but these are, these are tough times. So people make mistakes and to make that property viable. I, I, I'm just being honest with you. I mean, people are suffering today and to not to have not to come before our town, our town is supposed to help the constituents also. There, there, there was, there definitely was an error in their judgment and their design that had a design flaw. But those, those the to make them commercial is, it doesn't seem viable right now. So I, I, I would, I would well, I know, don't hold their feet to the fire, but I'd give them a pass, you know, and, 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 and try to help them. Why should they be vacant when they can fill them? Obviously, in today's climate, it's not going to work. So and, and people like to be, some people won't want to go, anything that goes in there, they don't want to go way in the back and then come around the front. So I'm just saying my piece that I, I believe that they did make a mistake when we went through this before. But they, you know, they came through. People, people, you know, narrow, they're narrow sighted, you know, they, they didn't take the full consideration of all the viable. There's a lot of intangibles, obviously. So I, 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 I like to say, you know, let them, let them go ahead and rent it out as apartments because the landlord still has to make his taxes and you know, and do everything. So they did make a mistake, Bo. I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that. But I mean, people, people make mistakes every day of the life, so. I like to see the guy make, make, make his payments on his mortgage. We're, we're not doing that. They, they are. So I'm just saying that, that's my opinion. You know, and, and you're right, Bo, they didn't do the correct thing, so.
The problem with that is we have a regulation that prohibits that. That's the biggest problem here. We have a regulation that prohibits strictly commercial uses in that, I mean, strictly residential uses in that area. So we can't just say, ah, go for it because you made an error and we feel bad for you for making an error. It doesn't work that way.
I understand what you're saying. But we also, we should help people too. We shouldn't, those are going to be empty buildings. What, what's going to go in there? I mean, they, they need help, so the guy still has to make his mortgage payments and everything. So I'm just saying, whatever we have to do to help them, let's help them too, you know, we, we make, we make good choices.
But I cut this part of the discussion off because it would sound to me like that's more in the line of our discussion once the public hearing is closed. Is deliberation. So I don't want to prevent, you know, I don't want to have that part of the public hearing.
So, you know, next door to this project, you have the, the motels, you have residential toward this end. Would be consistent with that. It is consistent, you have C D in the sense that it reduces additional traffic congestion because if you have two commercial units, you're going to have more traffic than you would have for, for two residential. It's not in a very large change, but it is one that makes these units functional. There, there's not, they're not likely to fill at any time. You know, you do market prospective units in advance and they had a couple of people who inquired and when they inquired on the specifics, it was parking the stock. And that's not going to go away. We found a solution that makes the residential perfectly usable. We know that those will sell. And the market actually has changed and that there's a real demand for residential. These will, these will sell. They will be occupied and I, I don't think it does damage, this isn't like right downtown where you, where you'd say, gee, we don't need a hole in our commercial at the extreme east end, where it's already in large part residential. There is some commercial across the street, but it fades towards this end. And I think that's also part of why getting commercial in there, some people want to have the synergies of other businesses. But when you get to this end, it gets a lot tougher. My client's looking for relief. They're looking for the, the town to give them a little bit of relief on their you know, on their project. And this is the, the most viable solution other than and if we took out the units, I suppose you could, or if we took out a unit, we could make it all parking just for one other. You'd lose, you'd lose a commercial.
By report, though, we did give some relief to add additional residential uses. There was another application, wasn't there? To increase the amount of residential uses in these front units, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you're right, Bo.
I, I don't remember the exact application, but I agree with you. Perhaps it was more of a both up and down originally.
There was a change.
Abby, the chief could summarize for us.
So, so the, the application that had previously, so this, this was a special exception that was granted to the property. I want to make sure that we know that under section twenty seven point two, point four in the East Main Village District where this property is, multiple unit dwellings in and of themselves are permissible, so there is not a requirement by the regulations that everything has to be mixed use. Mixed use is also permissible, but by special exception. But what, what you have before you is, is obviously the modification of this, this special exception modification request. The previous modifications that were made, there was one to modify the sidewalk configuration that came through. There was the entire, the, the whole request to change these two buildings to strictly residential and to add another unit into building three. That, the whole thing failed at the, at the last, the last time the commission heard this in, in, in two thousand twenty four. Then the applicant came back only to ask the question about adding the additional residential unit to building three. At which point the commission did find that that application was substantially different because it took out that commercial conversation and you approved that unit. So that unit is moving forward as two res, as, as two residential units. This, this application procedurally, so the public hearing, you want to make sure that you cover everything that you may need in order to deliberate on the special exception modification request. The difference is when it comes time to make your determinations after the close of the public hearing, you'll need to go through the two-pronged test of the impotent to reverse rule. And if you pass that threshold question, then you move into the deliberations on the actual request for the special exception modification, which is the content of whether commercial is appropriate or, or, you know, residential is appropriate. Findings of consistency with the, with the twenty fifteen P O C D and some findings that are in the stack report that may assist you in that matter. But that's, those findings don't happen until you answer those two problems. But yes, there's been, been several modifications to this application in the last year.
What I was unclear of, and procedurally I should have known better, I figured I asked you about this earlier. Do we need to make a determination about the whether or not this meets the threshold prior to continuing this public hearing tonight even, or is that something that we do once we're in deliberation?
You can, you can do it once you're in deliberation. What I would want to make sure that the commission has is every piece of information that you need in order to go through the full process of decision-making. The, if, if this application had Go through the full process of decision-making. Um, the, if, if this application had been less than, say, if it had been less than six months from when you had. Denied the previous one, then we would be having a different conversation and that threshold question, we would, yeah.
We'd be.
Right, right. But because enough time has passed, you, you do have to hear the application and go through the, the process. But in order to vote on the actual special exceptional modification, you have to then address first the impotent to reverse rule. That makes sense.
Um.
That is.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
How many units do you have built?
How many?
How many units are built at this time?
Four.
Four units are built.
Four residential.
Four residential units are built with a goal of thirty-two units?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the unit two is already existing, so that's.
Jay, can you?
You don't have to come forward to speak.
Sorry.
Can you state your name for the record?
Uh, uh, my name is Jay Kurok and I'm part of, uh, Rising Property Solution. So unit, uh, two is the existing building, which is there, which is part of the thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And unit eleven and twelve is ready. Unit nine and ten is framed. Unit one, we did structurally only because we need to move the parking and build the road. So that's why only the structural part is done for unit one.
So two active units is what I'm.
Correct.
Taking from that, though, and then thirty more to be.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. And this has been in front of the commission for, since twenty twenty-one was the initial?
Yeah, approved the original.
And conditions were one way. So by the time this whole thing gets built out, conditions may be another way. That's the only comment I'm kind of putting towards everyone at this point, like as the structure, as the, the units get built. To, to Bo's comment, like, there's, there's nothing even to really discuss at this time, it feels like, and. Understanding the changes is necessary for viability, but. We could continue with the other units or so have you until that. Like, I'm not seeing, uh, to Eddie's comments about relief and such, like. I'm not really seeing a need for relief at this time. It's not like they're hemorrhaging because then all the buildings are built and these.
But these two buildings are built. I believe, right?
No, he said they're just framed, one and four.
No, but four is not fair.
Okay, so four not even.
Can I just add, uh, something? So we, from the previous application, we did do a marketing. We did have customers who stopped by, coffee shop, they want to start coffee shop, attorney's office. And then, you know, office, you know, regular office. So we had like four, five, uh, tiny, uh, takeout centers. So we had a lot of people who stopped by, but everybody's concerned. The first question they asked was, can we park on the street? No, because there's not enough space. And then we also offered, you know, the extra parking spots inside. They said, no, we don't want to go all the way there and come, and the customers will park on the streets, you know, inside the community, maybe outside the community. Or at the three sixty-five, uh, credit union. So they all anticipate that it's going to be a chaos between the HOA and the business owner. So they are rejected. So nobody was interested. We did a lot of marketing, a lot of customers we did not. And they stopped by, they checked the place and, you know, nobody wanted it.
I mean, a comment I just have with that is other applications that we've experienced have had discussions with other businesses to. Have shared use of parking and that seemed to be, uh, successful in those conversations and help meet their parking requirements.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, probably one.
There's been continuity of delays here. There's.
Well, he just said they're gonna go to the sixty-five to park. I'm not sure. So like, I mean, if these scenarios, I feel like I'm, they're not valid, is my point. You know, like, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think you get up a conversation that it's not loud enough to be recorded.
Sorry, I, I wasn't, I'm saying, I, I don't think these scenarios are, are a valid reason for relief, like you. Dylan mentioned the three sixty-five.
Uh, again, great, um. I'd like questions for the app, Doug. So you're, you're sort of going into deliberation. And I wanna try to separate those. Okay, if you, go ahead.
Quick question, um. These units are being offered for sale, not for rent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right. Including the office spaces, you want to have those as office condominiums essentially.
Yes.
Okay, but I mean, they're for sale to the, uh, the applicants, uh, not, you're not getting, you're, you're not getting to be renting them all, okay?
That's cool. Thank you.
Um. Any?
So two.
I wanna hear your, what points, you, you had more points in your, uh.
In my David abuse, correct? On group, so. This is illegal use. It's, if it were any illegal use, we'd have to go to zoning board. It is legal for, um, and we could have applied for that originally. The idea was to try to meet the preferred scenario of having the commercial space. Um, but it turns out that that's not going to be a viable use. Right now, when we can make the changes, you know, to add in the garages, we did that to help try to fix things as much as we could. And as long as we're telling people that, you know, they might have to go across the street or up and back to have the customers do that. We're gonna run into the same problem. It's, it's something you can see coming down the road, but. Um, the, the modification is not, um, really material in terms of the impact on the town. But it is an impact. It will be of serious impact to the, to the applicant. Um, it is consistent with the P O C. Um, that, you know, the traffic flow is, is a problem on Route One and having residential instead of a commercial will reduce the number of cars that would be. Going to this property, going coming from this property. Um, it does help create housing diversity that, you know, housing choices, these are not your standard single-family residential. They are in demand, they will sell, they will become occupied, they will become viable, max paying, uh, entities. Um, and then, uh, you know, prioritize redevelopment, uh, E G five, prioritize redevelopment of vacant sites. Um, and support use of vacant buildings. We know that this is, these are likely to be vacant building. We're trying to keep that. We're trying to keep that from happening.
You can't build a building and then seek relief because it's vacant. It doesn't work that way.
I, I agree with you that it, that it would, that it would be. Reversed to, to build it, then wait until it's vacant for a period of time and then come back. I mean, then you're just hurting the, uh. At this point, we know where we're headed. We're trying to cut it off at a time when it can be redesigned, it can be reconfigured. And, um, and, and, because remember, there will be some internal changes to the structure of the building, you know, where we make the. Viables, rather than having to retrofit it backwards. Um, and, you know, so. Your, your threshold question, is it materially different? Yes, we reconfigured the buildings. I think that's sufficient to, to get over that threshold. On the set, so then you reach the regular, is this a special exception? Does it meet the spectral exception standards? It does, it needs your P O C D, um, and it, it does something that makes the project. Um, workable and it will be a successful thing for the town of Clinton. Um, this is a company that's invested here. And yes, they had some ideas in the beginning and over these last five years, things have dramatically changed in the marketplace. We're just trying to, um. You know, adjust to that as, as it has changed on us.
Um, is there anyone else from the, or anyone from the public who would like to address? Uh, this issue on, uh, Main Street, please? Um, any further comment? Um. Basically, if you don't mind, I'd like to cheat and use some of Abby's notes. Um, what you're saying is different from your last one. Is the site lacks vision space to allow for the commercial viability. Um, because it would interfere with the residential, uh, parking that's already on site. Um, it would result in less traffic on Route One. It's different because from the previous one, also because, uh. Uh, it will, this. You're stating that it will help preserve the historic properties on which are in, in, in the. In the whole complex. And then it's also different because you've added the garages and make, so that would be better for residential.
Primarily because of the, the structural change. I think that, that makes it materially different. We're not just making different arguments for the same. Project where we've actually reconfigured two of the buildings, which required reduction in, um, in some of the residential space. Um, or taking some of the commercial states and turning it into a residential, um, garage. You know, so it's, it, in that sense is a slight loss, but it's the best we could do to reconfigure it without taking out a building.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? With mission?
Any kind of time would have would be.
Discussion elimination.
Yes.
Okay, um, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Um, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thing, motion carried. Thank you. Now we move on to, um. Let's see, ten C or four C, planning zoning condition twenty-five dash twenty. Um, special exception to relocate Box Church. Um. Is there an agent or applicant available tonight?
Yes, there is.
Just state your name for the record and.
Yes, my name is Deli Tlaut. I am a landscape designer with Benesh. I am joined tonight by Will Walter, professional engineer at Benesh. We will soon, um, put our presentation up here. Um, I am also joined by Justin Hopkins of Tekton Architects, as well as Tom Holliva of Box Church. Um, before we get started here tonight, I did want to, uh, submit four letters, um. Of community members voicing their, um, overall support of this project. They were not able to make it here tonight. We just received these letters. Um, I just wanted to submit these, um, so you all can, can take a look. Included in that packet, um, I've also included, uh, two attachments that are already a part of the application. One is a letter. Um, approving off-site parking use in the case of overflow needs. As well as a document that states, uh, planning staff's overall, um, suggestion for approval here tonight. Um, tonight, we are respectfully, um, requesting approval for this special exception here. Um, we are looking at our site at One Heritage Park Road. Um, it's important to note that our current location of Box Church is at Four Heritage Park Road. That is just up the street in the I two industrial district. Um, we are looking to. Move locations just because the, um, owners are actually, um, at the end of their lease with this current property owner. So we are looking to create a new lease with, with this property owner. It's already been negotiated. Um, and they're looking to move into this new location just up the street. With this move, all current and proposed operations are going to be the same, so the church will continue to function as it does now. Um, and that's just mainly going to be Sunday services from eight thirty A M to ten A M with the addition of. Um, office hours for their four staff members as well. Um, those fluctuate when we have larger holidays, um, that require more hours, but, um. Those are only certain days of the year and that's when we would look into using, um, external parking. So our overall site work, we're looking at minor improvements to the, the site that we are looking at. So One Heritage Park Road. Has an existing building on site that would be looking to have improvements to now accommodate the new use. As a house of worship rather than the manufacturing use within, um, this district. This site improvements would include, uh, site lighting in the form of fifteen-foot pole lights. Uh, um, to illuminate the parking areas as well as our entry locations. Our parking is actually not changing at all. We are looking to just maintain the parking currently on site. As it exceeds the required parking spaces per art use. Um, as I said, we have been approved by the neighbor for twenty-five additional overflow parking, um, spots. Um, in the event that they're needed for larger events, for the holidays, um, et cetera. Um, we are also looking to add in new landscaping, mainly in the form of parking lot landscaping. And around the entryway. Uh, this would be in the form of native deciduous perennial and evergreen plantings. To provide year-round, uh, seasonal interest. We are also looking to extend an existing part, or an existing sidewalk, uh, to meet existing, uh, doorways. Along the north side of the building here. We are also proposing to have, uh, a new site identification sign as well as a new building sign. These would be pretty simple, maintaining the aesthetics that have already been established by signage within the area for the church. Um, that would be very simple with white backgrounds and, uh, black lettering. So these are not only just, uh, black and white. Photos of the signage is what the signage is going to hopefully look like here. We have reviewed these aesthetics with your design review board and have received their recommendation for, um, approval here tonight. Um, my colleague, Will Walter, has gone through this presentation at the really beginning stages of the project with town staff. Received really positive feedback at that time and we've maintained close contact with planning staff. To make sure, make sure that we are continuing to meet the regulations as best possible in this different, um, zone per art use. Um, with that, I would like to, um, pass this along to Justin Hopkins to talk more about the architectural.
And thank you, Delaney. Uh, for the record, Justin Hopkins, I'm an associate principal of Tekton Architects Offices in Hartford, Connecticut. Uh, so, uh, we're staying entirely within, uh, the existing building envelope. So. Uh, from a building code perspective, everything about construction type, allowable area, allowable, uh, building height. Is compliant for a change of use, uh, to an assembly, uh, use group. Uh, maintaining the existing seat count of the congregation in their existing space, so a hundred and eighty seats, uh, in our sanctuary. In the existing building, a hundred and eighty seats, uh, in the proposed interior renovations of the space. Uh, the interior renovations, uh, predominantly consist of the creation of the sanctuary space. Lobby space, a kids' world program, uh, which is allowable within an assembly use group. Um, these are for, uh, children that are at, uh, a Sunday service. Uh, while their parents may be in the actual service, there are activities that go on, on Sunday mornings. Uh. Plumbing facilities, uh, as well as some administrative office spaces. So really, really, uh. Not a whole lot other than the interior renovation. And, uh, as Delaney had mentioned, the building mounted signage, uh, would, would largely just go. On, up, on the existing facade. Uh, it's a six-foot diameter, uh, disc, um. That, uh, will signify the intruding space. So there, there is an existing mezzanine. Uh, we are not proposing any renovations, uh, to that, that consists of office space, uh, on that floor. Happy to answer any questions about the layout. No additions, uh. All of the work is interior. We will be modifying the existing buildings, electrical service. Mechanical systems, plumbing systems and fire suppression systems as part of this. And I know that was one of the comments from, uh, the fire marshal. Uh, during his initial review, fully prepared to go through the building permit application process, uh, pending this approval.
My only. For this certification, Abby, I'm gonna ask you to. Is the amount of exterior renovation that's happening, does that trigger the electrification?
Trigger the electrification, I'm sorry.
Uh, for, uh, e-vehicle.
No, because the way, because our new, uh, regulation went into effect and because it's existing parking, they're not doing fifty percent or more.
They're not changing existing parking.
So the change that went into effect November seventh actually brings them out of the requirement to comply with that new regulation.
Okay, so there, I just. Wanted to make sure I knew that before we go farther. Um. Does anybody from the commission have questions on this project?
Yes.
It appears to be a pretty straightforward project. It's allowed as a special exception. I think they've covered all the bases.
Uh, on that case, if there's nobody on the commission has questions, is there anyone from the audience who would like to? Uh, ask either the applicant questions or make a statement, um, about this, uh, proposed change? And just state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is David Bruner. Yeah, uh, just thank you for taking a couple of minutes to hear from us today. Uh, my family and I live here in Clinton. Uh, we love this town. We love this community and the amazing people we've encountered here. Many of those people are from Box Church. Uh, we worship there on Sundays with our family. Uh, when our family has faced challenges, uh, be it medical, health issues, uh, just issues in our family. Box Clinton has been the circle of people that have come around us and have supported our family during those times. Um, because our family worships there, and my kids look forward to it every week. Uh, they love being there. Um, the church, even beyond just what it gathered for Sundays, they are a force for good in the community. Uh, this past weekend, uh, the church helped sponsor and support a retreat for parents of kids with special needs. My wife was able to attend to that, and the majority of the parents at the event, um, don't even attend the church, but the church wanted to help support them and encourage them as they go through that journey of raising, uh, those children. So we've been so encouraged by the way that they help to make the community a better place. Everything they do, uh, that I've seen, they do with excellence. Uh, serving the community, Sunday mornings, even down to making sure they have, uh, ushers available, that parking runs smoothly, that services are conducted well. Uh, it's an excellent team, and we're thankful to have them here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here.
I'm Adriana Tuzinski. We, my husband Dan and I have moved here about a year and a half ago, and, uh, the Monshorn Road, and we, uh, were looking for a place of worship. And, uh, reviewed Vox, made our first approach, and we were welcomed very, very warmly. Uh, those same people that welcomed us a year and a half ago are the same people that I do volunteer work with, uh, share table discussions with at nighttime, and, uh, do, uh, service for the church. So the connections were real from the get-go. At this point, I am also the face that people are being welcomed to at this point as well. And, uh, when someone comes and re- returns after their first initial meeting, uh, a connection was made, a need was met, and I know that, uh, growth for that person has started. Um, Vox is a, is on a mission where they share their faith in action. And, uh, we have so many outreach programs, uh, there's continual, uh, service-oriented uh, activities for the community, uh, fun things like Easter egg hunts that they have established on a very high level. It's very, very fun. Uh, then we've just made some kind of galop for the kids, uh, for Halloween, and, uh, gave that out over at the Clinton Commons. And, uh, we are now packing bags and bags of groceries for Thanksgiving for the food center. Uh, they, the activities are endless. Uh, this new location isn't just about the place of worship. It's about the possibilities for Vox and the continuation of connections for the community as they grow faith within their purposes. And, uh, it's a very, very special place, and I'm happy to have joined it and to talk to you about it today. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could you just repeat your name from Adriana Tuzinski?
What's the T U C Z I M S K I?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Dan Tuzinski. I'm Adriana's husband, and, uh, we moved to Clinton in, uh, December of twenty twenty-three. Um, I was raised Catholic. I was in a church in upstate New York. Um, and we're wondering what we're gonna do in terms of religion, being part of the community, and, uh, Adriana found Vox. Uh, we went to a few, um, of the sermons on Sunday mornings, and we were amazed at how inclusive it is. Uh, they're constantly working on helping people, giving back to the community, um, praying for people who may be ill. Uh, what really touched me was I was diagnosed shortly before I got here, uh, with several different forms of cancer, and I was treated Memorial Sloan-Kettering. Well, Pastor Matt found out about it, and he led a prayer group for me, keeping me in his prayers. And I can say it meant the world to me, because it was a difficult time. Uh, I didn't really know which way this was gonna go. Uh, and it's just, I haven't seen churches or communities really that are this inclusive. They reach out to everybody. They try to make everybody feel wanted, appreciated. And right now, they're giving back to the community through Thanksgiving, just like they have at all other times. I think the reason that they have to expand is that they have more and more population. People have heard about Vox, they're coming here, they're bringing their kids here, and they're expanding on some level. And I know they always try to do the right thing. I've been just grateful that they're here. Um, and I think this is a great project. I've looked at it. I'm an attorney. I'm a land use attorney from New York, so I know a little bit about zoning and planning and those kinds of things. And I just think this is a great community project. So having said that, I'm not gonna go on longer, because you guys have had a lot of blood, a lot to talk about tonight. But, um, I hope that, um, Vox can get your support as they move into another building. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So your servant, please just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Curtis Gulliver.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read because. Alright, so, uh, as I said, I'm Curtis. I've been a resident of Clinton for fifty-one years. Um, I've been attending Vox with my wife Nicole, uh, who also grew up in Clinton. Uh, we've been there for five years now. Vox has been a great place for us, as well as our adult children and grandson to come together and worship. Uh, one thing that really impressed me about them is their commitment to community outreach. Uh, whether it's through food drives to support the local pantry, or many other charities that they come alongside of and partner with, they're making a large and lasting impact in both Clinton and the state of Connecticut. Uh, another thing I find is pretty impressive is the age range of the congregation. You get everything from a brand-new baby to a senior group, and everybody gets together. And, uh, really, this facility would be great for the whole community, not just serving a small demographic. Um, lastly, I believe anytime we could take an existing space in town and repurpose it for something, uh, that serves the community in a positive way, and, uh, everybody wins. So thanks for your time and considerations.
Thank you.
My name's Phil Williams. I've been a member of Vox Church and the previous church that was founded by Pastor Bob Appleby, who was raised in Clinton. It was Cornerstone Church, been there for, uh, since nineteen ninety-five. And under Cornerstone, and now with Vox, this church has contributed to the community of Clinton in so many ways. We've done the food outreaches, which Vox is doing a great job of doing that. We've done toys for kids at the Christmas time with the police force, and everything that this church has ever done has been focused on the community. So I implore you to support this application so that we can move into a larger building and do even more for our community. My business is two doors down from Vox, and the building that they're moving into, it was gonna be a great addition for this church to expand and do even more for Clinton. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. There's nobody else who would like to speak or who has additional, you know, new information? I'll, uh, ask the commission if they, anybody has any other question? In that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, Eddie.
Oh, Eddie, go ahead.
Uh, I, I disclose that, um, I'm a member of Vox Church and, um, I, I support the move for them to go over there, because they, they, um, contributed to, um, a lot of children can't pay their bills at the high school. And, uh, myself and, uh, two other local, um, affiliates, um, the Buffaloes and Vox Church, they donated a significant, significant amount of money so these children can eat, because their parents were getting inundated with bills. They're further, they're further town, and I disclose to you guys that I belong to the church, but they are unbelievable. The Pastor Matt is unbelievable. It's, they're just great people, and I love going to that church. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Question? Can I just add one thing before you?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's, uh, I'm with Vox Church, and just really quick, because I know it's been a long, long night. Um, just wanna say we are really grateful for the commission hearing our application, but, um, just super grateful for the staff and how they've really walked with us, uh, to get to this point. So as you, um, uh, consider our application, um, yeah, just on behalf of all of Vox Church, um, thanks for hearing it and, um, uh, appreciate all of your efforts to get us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'll, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So I'm moved.
A second.
Second, uh, there, okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Standing, right, motion will be carried. Thank you. Um, next on the item, our staff report. Um, I'm not going to go through each one of those right now. We'll do them as we, uh, get to our discussion. Um, but we don't have a report, a new report for, um, the text amendment for sections three, twelve, and twenty-seven, and then twenty-nine. Um, because, uh, the changes came in too late for a spec, uh, additional staff report to be done. But the report from last month, uh, should still be considered, those things. Um, with that new business, uh, we have planning and zoning commission twenty-five dash twenty-one. My notes, uh, this is a special exception for a restaurant pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point thirty-two B of the Clinton zoning regulations at twenty-one East Main Street. Um, this is one we need to receive and schedule for a public hearing. Uh, it would be on December eighth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to receive and the schedule for a public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept and receive, um, Pete Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash twenty-one, a special exception for a restaurant pursuant to twenty-seven point two point thirty-two. And, uh, we'll receive it and schedule it for, uh, public hearing. December sixth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right? Um, opposed, standing, gotta remember to do that. Okay. Um, it passes. Uh, okay. Next one item of new business is our draft budget review. Uh, Abby, this is, you're up.
Yep, so I forwarded it out, um, a draft fiscal year twenty-seven budget to the commission to visit, we'll bring this to you for your endorsement before I submit it, um, to the finance director and town manager for their next steps and before it gets to the town council. So a couple of things, um, I'll take you quickly through the line items, and then hopefully at the end, ask for any modifications and a vote, um, to to move this thing forward. The, um, some of the things are, are stay the same and some are increasing, so I just wanna go through those. You'll note there's not salary numbers on here. There's certain contracts that are still settling. Those numbers come directly to us from finance, so that's not necessarily included in the commission's vote, but the rest of it is. Um, so in terms of, of these particular lines, travel expenses, um, we historically maintain two hundred and fifty dollars for whether it's commission members or staff to travel to training events or meetings or those kinds of things. If we need to, if the town vehicle is not available to us, we can have mileage reimbursement and then those kinds of things. We try to keep it to a minimum, use the town, the town vehicle for most things, uh, but we do carry that line. Under training, um, I've increased the training budget this year, mostly to accommodate, um, increasing the individual commissioner amount from fifty-five to sixty-five dollars apiece. So as the cost of these trains goes up, we'll still continue to send you free opportunities and whatnot. We wanna make sure everybody that is, you know, stays current on their, uh, state mandated training. So that's, that's in there. Um, the most significant increase is other professional and technical services. Um, so there's, this is kind of a, an interesting line, because we cover GIS services. For us, the assessor is a department of public works, because I manage that contract. It's easier to keep it all in one space. The only piece that we don't cover in our budget that comes separately, um, is the hosting fee for our online GIS, and that gets run through, uh, the IT department, but everything else comes through me. Um, we are doing a couple of additional pieces. Um, so it's thirty-one thousand dollars. It took us the Florida receipt from Time Bond, who's our provider, to continue, um, doing data upgrades, managing the, you know, as personal changes happen, um, you know, boundaries change, owners change, making sure we're current on all that information, because it's sort of the core, it's the business that we do every day. The other pieces that I've, I've requested to add in this year, this is really sort of the more discretionary side, is two thousand two hundred dollars for Esri ArcGIS Pro software. The hope there is that by actually having the software in-house for staff to work on some of these changes, we can actually create, edit, manage data at a much higher level than we've been, than the towns at the capacity to do with the past.
Can you use the cloud-based system?
We have ArcGIS online. I don't find it to be.
I, I've used both. That's why, um, I know the, the cloud base is, uh, really limiting.
It is, and and mu- much of what we do in the cloud base and the ArcGIS online is essentially, uh, we can do data collection for DPW, so if they're gonna go look at outfalls, or they're gonna go do a specific thing and capture data in the field, or if we have interns, we would maintain that licensing as part of our ArcGIS Pro, uh, piece in order to say, okay, we want somebody to go count street trees or stop signs or benches in a particular area to do our inventory. It's great, but when we wanna do things like amend the zoning lines, what, you know, do analysis to say, what would happen if we think we have an entire neighborhood where the zoning may not reflect the actual size of parcels? And if we wanted to change setbacks or requirements, doing an analysis to say, well, who would be conforming and who wouldn't if we made this change? What would it actually do to people's properties? That's the kind of analysis we would be able to do with ArcGIS Pro. It will take some training. It's a new platform. I'm trained on ArcMap. Um, and so that's in the, and they have shifted. That is now a dinosaur sort of technology, and now it's, now I would need to get myself up to speed on Pro. Um, so it would be a little bit of a learning curve, and so I don't wanna, you know, say that, you know, we, we're using this out of the gate for in-depth analysis, but the goal would be, over the next couple of years, to be able to really serve this commission, same thing with inland wetlands, um, to be able to actually enter in, you know, map boundaries of wetlands, to all, all of those kinds of things. So that's the thought process. The third piece of this, um, budget request, and actually I, I have four thousand in here that I was using as a placeholder, but have since gotten, um, a higher quote for about sixty-eight hundred dollars as a not-to-it fee number, is to support upgrades or open up permitting software. Again, this isn't just used by our department. It's, it's building, it's DPW. There's, there's other folks that, you know, the health department uses it for some of their stuff too. Um, but we have a break in the way the system was set up originally when the town brought it on. This is sort of prior to, to my arrival. Um, and we have a, we have over a thousand mismatched records in there. And what that means is that there are times when people will come to apply for a building permit, and the parcel that they need to select in order to apply for that permit doesn't exist. Or there's duplicative data in there, where folks have tried to solve that issue over time, and they've created another parcel, and now there's two potential places that folks could apply for a permit. We need to reconcile this data and make sure that all of our systems are talking appropriately to each other now and have the mechanisms in place to make sure they talk to each other into the future. And so this is, this is sort of a, a large cleanup effort to make sure that our stuff is, is functional, that, you know, we're not, we, we've tried manually, uh, de- uh, dealing with this issue, but the scale of the project is bigger than we have staff to complete the house. Um, and so we do need to get that, that update. And so I would actually up this, um, by another twenty-eight hundred dollars to, to, for this, for this total.
We'll say a thousand, how, a thousand properties are.
Yeah, the, the, what we call them is mismatch records. Um, and so what it means is either something in the way the assessor's ID for it or the ID that, the, the address ID that the, this movement system is using.
Yeah.
They're off. And so what has happened is we can create the record, but it may not link to the parcel data with the assessor. And so what will happen is if the assessor updates something, it won't show up in our system. So owners change, or, you know, you know, I bought a house, and now I wanna get a permit for it. I'm not shown in your system. Why am I not in your system? Um, so that's the kind of stuff we're trying to make sure.
Oh, it's not like just a few cards for, with showing up for a different property?
No, no, it's, it's not. It's not the raw. It's either missing information, duplicative information, or it's just simply not updating. It's not, the, the link is broken.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Uh, the other part of this too is that we, for a long time, the assessor had not broken out the condos in parcel data in a way that would off of the system. We, we spent last year rectifying that, so I would do ninety-nine percent of our condos are now in the right space to be able to be in the system as units that can be applied, people can apply separately with permits. So we're, we're basically doing data improvement as the years go by and trying to make our systems function better.
My, my only question, like, one step in properties for wrong, like, shouldn't we get on the company, but? My my only question, like one step in properties were wrong, like shouldn't we get on the company, but?
Some of it has, well, some of it has to do with how the data was imported and how many permits came in from the old system and how, you know, so it's, it's sort of a cleanup from, from the the initial piece that just didn't get resolved as as things were in such forms. And so now we 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 can't do it in-house and we need the money to to fix it. Uh, so that's, that's sort of the, so that's again, that's the largest um piece of this. The other piece, um, other professional services, we're just upping um some of that because some of the membership uh uh pieces are a little bit higher this year, that's by about twenty dollars, so it's not, it's not a big one. Um, we've added another hundred dollars to postage just because the cost of certified mailing is building up and we have decision letters to mail, and it's the business of the commission, so that's pretty straightforward. Um, department request for um other items, this is sort of specialty items that we might use um in in the office. And one of the things, uh, so we wanna make sure we have enough money for a standing desk um for a full room in a way or the adapter for them um so they can stand as needed throughout the day, we can transition all of the employees to be able to be a little bit more active um and not have to sit for quite as long. And then the other piece is um a fifty-five inch TV monitor, mounting bracket, and cable for Kathy because she does so much meeting with the public. Um, right now they kinda have to come around and look over her shoulder on on her screens. It would be great if she could do what I do in my office, if folks have been in there, um, and sort of put things up on the screen, really, you know, have a place for for that, that public interface um in a way that is is useful, so. I'm adding that in as well. Um, so what I've been looking for is just your endorsement of of the budget as it stands now. We'll do, we'll still do our, you know, our annual sort of updates and stuff on on where we stand with the budget. We have a lot of uh balance left in the budget because many of our bills don't come due until the spring, so right now it doesn't look, we've spent a whole lot of money, but it's it's coming, I promise. Um, so we try not to, you know, we, we don't spend unnecessarily, but we try to, we try to kind of just tailor the budget for exactly what we need. And then the other thing, so that's, that's the department budget. Um, the other piece of this, and and then, and again, just for your own, I'm sure you all know, but um we also manage the inland wetlands budget, the ZBA budget, we help out with the WCC budget and the conservation budget, so we also have those um that are being approved as as those commissions meet. Um, the other piece of this, and this is sort of a bigger ticket item that didn't come to you in email, is out of the P O C D recommendations. One of those recommendations was to do a comprehensive look, right, at our zoning regulations, which ties into our subdivision regulations, which also relates to our inland wetland regulations. So my capital proposal for this year is going to be a hundred thousand dollars to do a comprehensive overhaul of those things. I think it will take, um, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months to do a good job of this. I, this is not, you know, I think P O C D was, you know, in in some ways um a more sort of easy to move through kind of project. This one will be a big, um, but I think we need to do it. And so if the commission is amenable, I will put that capital request in. We can put it in to do, I mean, it's entirely this year, a hundred thousand dollars, which would be my recommendation. The other alternative would be to do what we did with the P O C D and break it up over multiple fiscal years. Um, but that means we'd be waiting longer to to overhaul it.
I think it might be better to do it in one shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I I always prefer to put it in as a one shot and if the couns- town council decides that they need to spread it out, let them or.
Let them call the energy.
But I I, and I I wanna stress, I feel very strongly that the the uh data management systems to that, that is a very high priority to, and um, I I feel very strongly about that, but, you know, it's not something we should be cutting corners of.
It it ends up saving us money.
No, it 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 costs us money to have it.
I guess people manually redo it, but yeah, every order is actually, it's that.
Do you need a motion to endorse this draft?
Yeah, motion to endorse the draft with the um additional twenty eight hundred dollars in um the other professional, technical, and services lines, so that would be one. And as a a motion to endorse the hundred thousand dollar request for capital.
Should I combine them or separate them, separate?
Either is fine.
I'd like to combine them and make a motion for both, to approve both. To endorse both. To endorse both, I'm sorry, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second, I had it.
Yeah, several seconds, it's okay. Um, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? None, abstaining, I got everybody, so I'm gonna go to you. Um. Let's see, now we're double business. We're, we're moving on. So we have our uh three public hearings that close tonight, we can now uh discuss and uh.
May I make a suggestion, Mike? Should we move uh C to the top, because I think that one will go through quicker, Box?
Um, so if you wanna make a motion to do that, I would entertain it.
I'd like to make a motion to uh take number seven, C, which is PZC twenty five twenty, and make that A, and then subsequently make A, B, and B, and C. Second.
You got a second?
Aye.
Okay. Are any discussion on this? All those in favor?
I did.
Okay, both? Any? None, okay, motion carries, so we'll go with uh uh a special exception to relocate Box Church. Um. Let's see. I I didn't open that document yet, you gotta get ready. I have it.
I can do it, I'm.
You go ahead, you do it.
I'm going to approve a special exception to use one heritage park for a religious use as shown on plans titled Box Church Improvement, One Heritage Park Road, Clinton, Connecticut, dated October second, twenty twenty five, prepared by Alfred Benetton Company and adopt the following finally with that. Wanted to public hearing met the legal notice requirements in section four of the Clinton zoning regulations and Connecticut general statutes uh of section one twenty, one twenty-four, section eight dash seven B. Two, section seven, twenty-seven dot dot two dot fifty C of the Clinton zoning regulations permits regular religious uses by special exceptions in the I two zone district. Three, the proposal meets the general conditions in section eleven of the Clinton zoning regulations covering the interior of the special exceptions. Four, the applicant has met the requirements of section twelve dot forty-one of the Clinton zoning regulations. Five, the application is in general performance with the purpose and intent of the Clinton zoning regulations in twenty fifteen plan of conservation development.
Thank you, we have a second?
Second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Don't you slow on when you're on. Okay, um, any further discussion?
None.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both? Standing, motion carries, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Now, the item seventeen, uh, planning and zoning commission twenty five dash sixteen text amendment through sections three, addition to twelve. Sorry. Okay, we can, we can. Uh, we, you wanna take a break for five minutes? Or do you wanna power through, let's power through, we're gonna. I think we can power through. Okay, text amendment, uh, section three, addition to section twelve and section, then section twenty seven and modify section twenty nine in the Clinton zoning regulations for residential adaptive reuse. Um, closed public hearing, we've had a, um, uh, one uh condition on this that we discussed, which was uh, not in the initial um material, which was the change the, from a fifty-year deadline or fifty-year date to being um prior to prior to existing zoning. Okay, um, so now we're at discussion, and I know that lots of people wanted to discuss, so who likes uh start?
Oh, I'll start.
Go ahead, Bill.
I think that's an improvement, first of all, because we got rid of an arbitrary date, put in a specific date that had a, had a rational reason for it, so that's positive. I don't think that the, the standards go far enough to to limit the changes. Um, you know, and I'll read it again, buildings proposed residential adaptive reuse must maintain a historic appeal. Well, I think we've kind of established that some of these buildings don't have a historic appeal. And historic appeal is rather vague. Um, expansion and external changes to the building remain within the existing building footprint or be limited to those needed for life, safety, accessory purposes. Any other proposed alterations, especially by an expansion, must be compatible with its original character and strive to enhance the town center's identity as a historic new village. So even though the testimony is that is the goal, the regulation as proposed doesn't really address that. It doesn't keep the building as is, so to speak. I mean, I I think we're kind of getting to rewriting the whole thing, but if the, if the regulation, say, required uh the safety things to be limited to the rear of the building wholly, so that the visual from the street for most, this one would be an exception, would be consistent with, with the original architecture. Um, I don't have any issues with the parking thing. I do have another concern with the addition to a special standard for non-conforming uses. And if you read that section twenty nine point two point one, you could make those changes for safety reasons without changing and setting up a special exception for this one particular use. You can have those changes, that's kind of allowed in there already. Uh, that being said, I don't believe this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in its current form, nor in the form that we uh are expecting to adopt in in a short period of time. And I don't find it's consistent with the overall comprehensive town plan. And above all, I I, you know, the concept I don't necessarily have a huge issue with, I mean, the idea of of transforming these buildings, but we have regulations, it's just throw them into bonfire every time that somebody comes up with a new idea. You know, and that's where the, that's where the P O C D comes in, that we have to, you know, we have to outline our goals, and that's why our our, our decisions have to be consistent with that. And they noted some consistencies with the plan of conservation developments in its current form, but there are far more specific inconsistencies with that. Uh, you know, and I can read them all. You know, if you go to uh this, the regulation. I'll read it down here, but uh it's, there are far more inconsistencies with the plan, and also, as we all know, with the plan that we just worked on so far. And I think that that's, you know, that's the kind of the cross, if you look at page thirteen of our existing plan of conservation development, we envision a Clinton that focuses mixed use in commercial development in targeted areas along Route One corridor. On page fourteen, the first paragraph, first full sentence, we envision a Clinton that ensures thoughtful and appropriate economic development that does not detract from existing businesses, but introduces a healthy and competitive business environment. On page twenty seven, under economic development, that entire paragraph is applicable. On page thirty six, specific action items to fit both planes. Modify and fully understand that the net revenue minus expenses is in parentheses, impacted permitting residential component on commercially attractive space. Page thirty nine, a plan is spoken, plan is, planning focus area, first paragraph, where the town would anticipate and encourage increased mixed-use commercial or industrial development. The last paragraph, these areas are the primary locations where the town would like to support existing and foster new businesses. On page forty, notwithstanding the potential for improvements in any other areas of the town, the planning focus areas are considered the highest priority for development, particularly mixed-use and commercial development. This goes on to the uh, you know, uh, the executive summary, the comments that, you know, that Abby had made, and, you know, that it does find some consistency. But again, in my opinion, the consistencies that were listed are broad-based as opposed to specifics, and I think we should address on the specifics, I think. I may be a stickler for for the regulations, but I just have a great degree of difficulty taking away from our plan of conservation development that we have and that we just worked almost a year on. And these were the things that we focused on, focused on having a mixed use in the, in the retails, in the Route One corridor in the center of town. That was a primary focus, and.
Your words. Oh, I should say, you know, my view of that is, by way of magic, one, the way I would want mixed use to be is that you'd have a building that's residential next to a building that's commercial and the, we can't do that, that that, you know, we can't define it that uh way. Um, the issue with the multitude of uh properties that were shown to us is that um, they are either currently residential, non-conforming, okay, which um, or are otherwise not viable as businesses in the current structure. Okay, and so this type of regulation, in that sense, I think is very important for us. It makes, you know, to eliminate a non-conforming use or to allow it to become, to make those conforming uses, and also to prevent um things from becoming dilapidated, which does have a distinct uh impact on our economic development. Okay, if you allow things to just fall apart, it's not, it's not going to enhance the town, bring people into the town. Um, so I, I, you know, I am, you know, as you was said, I'm talking the broad, you're talking the specific. But I think um, I think that the broad view, looking at all those properties and how many properties were shown is a significant thing to consider.
I I agree with that, but if, but at what point do we just, just throw a regulations book in a big bonfire and watch it?
I'm not saying throw the regulations out, I'm saying I I adjust the regulations so that they fit the needs of the community. Uh, Jay.
Yeah, I'd like to say something, we all see this application a little differently, okay, and uh we're discussing it now. And I think in this case, if we're not breaking any rules or zoning regulations or codes, I feel for this buil- building, we should accept and pass this and make the exception, I think it's good.
No, it's not for the building.
Yeah.
It's not an exception, it would be for all, for both, for itself.
Yeah.
It's the all yard two, all part three, all four.
Right, right, it's all.
Okay, right, right.
You will be changing it for all those properties.
I can, I get it, I get it.
I guess I was still confused about the um, uh, adopting this text amendment prohibits the mixed use, or is it, does it make it?
It would not prohibit mixed use.
No, okay, so it doesn't make buildings change from commercial to residential?
No, no, it was allowed strictly residential.
I see.
And that's, that's kind of my fear, like if they if, I'm saying landlord would rather convert uh anything to residential because the values are extremely high uh for residential rentals and everything. It's like, if we put this in place to be, remove any chance of improving downtown, does it exist if if people just wind up maybe get a chance to bring it back if?
If it's gone.
Right.
And and that's kind of my point, you know, and it's, you know, if you look at the laws of supply and demand, having inexpensive uh office space or commercial space is a great thing for the town. You know, if you have to go to Madison and you're paying ten dollars a square foot and you can move your office to Clinton for seven dollars a square foot, that's a good thing, and guess what happens when the clients of that accountant or that attorney come to Clinton? They notice, oh, this this restaurant, I've never been there, the new restaurant is gonna go on a coffee break, oh geez, let me swing down to Aqua. That is the type of stuff that we're looking to bring in, we're looking to bring in those people that, instead of just the people that live here, whether it's this building or other buildings, we wanna bring in the business interests, so. You know, it sounds kind of contradictory to common sense, but having cheap office space available is actually a good thing for the town because it attracts other businesses. You know, like I said, for for certain professions, it's not gonna apply, but for a doctor or for an attorney or for an accountant or several other professionals, they can get office space less expensive here than they can in Westburg or in Madison, it's hard to say no to. And it brings in not just those professionals, but it brings in their clients as well, Lisa brings them through town, so they can see. So they can see what we have here.
Just to play devil's advocate to Dylan's comment, I mean, in the uh, amendment, it says it leaves an option for a optimal mix of residential, the, the commission to determine an optimal mix of residential units and that's vague enough to have prohibit a.
Yeah, but, but there and there, there also Zach, there's, there's a problem with that also because that's leaves it solely up to a different commission or opinion. And that leads to accusations of why'd you give it to him and not to her? You know, and it's, that's problematic. I mean, I know, like I said, I know I'm kind of a stickler for these things, but in my opinion, zoning should be as black and white as possible. Because it eliminates those, you know, those accusations or concerns, or actually they, the chance of them being biased.
So.
I feel like.
Yeah.
This is.
Go ahead. You're very good.
And I think like all of us, maybe not. Okay, we're all forward a little bit on this.
I'm actually torn a little bit on it.
The, um, well, I think a lot of us would like to see a reuse of this particular building that we've been talking about, that the fifth amendment is not really about. What's missing is a threshold. In other words, um, as several people pointed out, you can take any uh, existing building and, you know, any of the qualifying buildings, they don't necessarily have to be financially non-viable as they are that you would just determine that they were more financially viable as residential. There's no threshold. Now, at the same time, you don't want to motivate people to let something get completely dilapidated before they can redo it. I think the entire question of residential, particularly on West Main, is probably one of the very first things we should look at as you're going forward with, with Abby, we uh, you know, start to look again at rewriting the regs. You know, um, as was pointed out this evening, we had that situation where we allowed them briefly in and then we had an election and we uh, changed, didn't allow them. Uh, it didn't allow residential on West Main and um, you know, this is something that's got to be looked at, addressed from a comprehensive point of view, because clearly there's a lot of demand for residential on West Main. I'm not sure we're real happy with some of the residential we've gotten on West Main. Uh, and I don't think we can ignore the, the, you know, the, the demand of pressure that exists there.
Thank you.
Back here in the workshop.
Yeah, I guess I was wondering the commission's thoughts on, as he mentioned, the eight thirty G um, as an alternative, but I was, I guess I was just thinking about it and I guess if it comes, it comes, right? Like that's the other side of it.
You know, there is, I don't know if you want to call it an alternative to eight thirty G, but an applicant could come forward and just say, just for the sake of argument, they have a building that they could convert to three apartments. They could voluntarily make one of the units of the three subject to the qualifications of a, of the affordability, you know, quotient. And that can be added to our, to our uh, inventory of affordable units without going through an eight thirty G application. Uh, so that's, you know, another option that might be able to be drafted into a revised version of this. Uh, because they can do that. We could do, we could, you know, that's allowed and it could be inventory. You can even do it if you have a an accessory apartment in your home for an impound, if you can register that as an, as an affordable unit, if you so choose. Um, it's 40 years. Well, he, but no, you're not restricted to the, to the time. I mean, this, i- if we were to take that up, I would think that it would be permanently.
It would be permanently.
Yeah, that'd be residential. But that's another alternative that might be kind of a compromise for a whole, you know, the applicant, regardless of what they're stating, their idea is not to preserve historic building. Simple as that. I mean, like I, like I stated prior, uh, you know, the last historic architectural significance been the, the Victoria period and that really was, you know, kind of nineteen hundred where that stopped. So that is a nice stated purpose, but it's really not the purpose. Uh, I know we don't want to get into too specifics of buildings, but being.
Bought it.
What's that?
I, I bought it. It is. I say it is, it is.
Yeah, so.
We.
I just, for multiple reasons, I don't think that this application in its form is, is right for the town of Portland. I think it's not consistent with the P O C D. I don't think that the stated goals are supported in the, in the written portion of it and the, in the evidence itself. I have a, a big problem with the addition to non-conforming uses because again, uniformity. I think that, uh, I don't like the lack of uniformity, but again, if you bring in something prior to a certain age, you're kind of getting away from that argument. But yeah, I think I've, I've said enough on that.
What I would like to have a consider is requesting staff to prepare two motions. Uh, one in favor, one in, uh, and one to approve, one to, um.
Have them.
I ha- I have them written, but they, they don't encompass the entirety of this discussion. So if there are pieces that we like, so you can feel free to take a look at them.
It's actually according to the statutes, we did, I mean, we, if we did not deny an application to amend our regulations, we don't have to state a reason. We only have to state our reasons for approving an amendment to our regulations. If we wanted to deny it, it could be, I woke up on the wrong side of bed this morning.
In your legislative function, yes, you have, you have strong discretion um, for record keeping purposes and, and sort of understanding what the, the commission, you know, sort of why the decision was made and it's a stronger position for the commission to state on record. Either way, you have, you have that freedom. Um, I have, I have prepared draft motions for approval and denial. You have sixty-five days from today to make this decision.
What I was getting at is I, I think it would be good for us to review those and um, I would like, uh, I mean, unless people feel that I went off track, I would like to continue this to the next month so that we can uh, consider the draft motion.
It makes no sense to rush.
And make, uh, you know, make an informed decision, make sure that we agree with what we're saying. Um, I'm really worried uh, about uh, not, not really understanding what we're voting on sometimes. And so in this case in particular, I think it would be valuable for us to continue this.
I, I think the point is that there isn't a good choice here. Um.
Yeah, I see you, Eddie. I'll get you. I'll come to you in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Oh, the other thing is that as a parliamentary approach, it's usually better to introduce a message, a, a motion to approve even if we're going to deny. Uh, because if you introduce a motion to deny and it fails, then you're in a real bad situation. So uh, advice on how to incorporate the observations uh, that would be negative, you know, perhaps in the first response to a, uh, a motion to approve would be also a useful thing to work with.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I, I like everything you said. Um, I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with Bo, but I, I really agree with what you said about the buildings being dilapidated. If people don't reduce, do something and um, I, and I also agree with Ellen. So I'd like to make um, uh, the Abby come up with the approval with different um, aspects of this regulation. I just don't want to deny it.
Thank you. Um, okay, so can I have a motion to continue the public hearing called? Or that's, that's to continue this uh, discussion that's not public hearing.
For a second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both saying a percent. Um, and then our last item for uh, old business is uh, planning zone commission twenty-five dash nineteen. Special exception modification change of use to allow residential on a first and second floor units. Uh, one and four pursuant, um, or, um, for uh, one fifty-one East Main Street, Unit One.
This is the other part, two distinct votes. Right. So the, so the first piece that you do is determine whether the approval being sought is substantially similar to that of the previous application. So that's question number one. If you answer that it is, it is substantially similar, if you move on to question number two. If you believe that it is not substantially similar, then you proceed with the evaluation of the applications. So, so number one under discussion in the staff board is the first question. Is the approval being sought substantially similar to that of the previous application?
I think it's similar.
I believe it's similar as well, but I mean, I.
Well, although if we say it's similar, then, then the next one is, no, right?
Then you ask the question, then, so you, with someone who would need to make a motion to say, you know, this is the, you know, the agreement, this, this application is substantially similar to that of the previous application. And if, if that were to pass in the affirmative, then the next motion is, you know, I, I move to find that there has been a change of conditions or other considerations that materially affect the commission's previous decision. Because what you're doing is essentially you're saying the body of the commission has voted on this matter for. And we have to pass a certain threshold as a, as a body to, to overcome that previous denial. And so you would need to, to affirmatively find that there had been a change in conditions that materially affected the commission's previous decision in order to then get to the review. So if it is substantially similar and you make that vote, then you have to say, okay, conditions um, or other considerations materially changed.
I have a, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
The change that the attorney represented had to do with changes that they made to add, if I'm not mistaken, to add garages and so forth. So because they made those changes, does that signify a significant change in the whole application? Or is that the question that's before us?
That's a question before you. The, the cha- and, and again, there, there's proposed garage space. There's not permitted garage space yet. Ability permit, um, in order, you know, without the, the special exception.
So those garage spaces could be turned into parking spaces?
They, there's no change in approval to do that work at this point. I don't have permit for that. So whatever work they've done has to be retroactive.
So.
So they have four points that they sort of base on.
So let's, the, this first part of the discussion, then assuming there's still things you want to discuss about is is this significantly different than or substantially uh, uh, different uh, from the previous application that was denied?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I believe it's diff- it's a different application. It's not what we denied before. It's changed with the garages and everything. And, and, and like the attorney said, um, they, with this climate, I, I, I mean, I, I think it's different. That's, that's my opinion.
Right. I think circumstances certainly change because they had an opportunity to market it for here that way and market condition as well. Not to mention my own background knowledge of the meaning sets and everything as well. I, um, you know, it was really hard to keep the commercial on the first floor, but it caused uh, quite a few issues with everything. Um, I think, I think it's, it's best use as a residential property. But that's not what's before us right at this moment.
But the moment is, is an application substantially similar to that of the previous application.
Uh, that's the first question.
And you can answer, yes, it's similar and still make different findings about whether there's just been a change in conditions.
What's, what has changed other than the garages?
Well, the, the four things that they cited were the, um, uh, that before they just said that they were having difficulty selling units.
That's not our, that has nothing to do with our.
Well, no, but that was their whole argument before. But now they're, what they're doing is they're specifying that it, it doesn't have uh, sufficient space uh, for viable commercial use due to limited parking.
This, this is my thing. That's interesting. They have only built two buildings or whatever. When they build that whole thing, who's to say that somebody's not coming there, want to put a coffee shop or put a whatever they want to put there. Roll it over a place. I mean, right now they're looking at it as nobody's in this place, but if there was a lot of people there, maybe somebody would want to put a place on there.
Not only that, but what gets me is that when they came before this commission to get approval, they testified and demonstrated.
No, we're not, we're not on that part. We're on the, we're on the.
That's all I'm saying. It's not, it's not far along, far enough along for them to come back and want to change it at this point, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, but at this point, we can find either that the application has changed and that's what they're contending with the requirements. Or we can find that something else has changed.
Right.
And I think that what they're saying is the market, that's the market, the conditions have changed. Either one of those is enough to say yay to that first part. Or we could find that not, neither one has changed sufficiently to, to say yay and then, you know, you say nay on that first part and then the whole thing goes away.
So.
I think the, the garages and the conditions have changed that enough to uh, discuss the application as a new application.
She's saying that they don't even have permits for the garages there.
No. Well, it, it, it can't get permits for the garages because the special exception doesn't show them as such. So it, that's a little bit of a circular piece, right? So their intent is to modify the special exception through this to include those garages as part of the residential conversion, right? That's what they're showing and what they're proposing. But they don't have, Kathy can't sign off on that permission yet. They can have as many building permits as they want, but she can't say yes to the special exception.
It doesn't match what was approved.
Correct.
Although it, it, it goes against my opinion on the project in total, I do feel that the application before is, is significantly different as well. Kind of like what Zach said.
Yeah, I'm not. It's no comment. My, the second part of this foundation.
But I think the application itself is different enough for us to consider.
If we can consider market conditions, like you're saying, and it's significant enough.
Say market.
I don't, I don't think market conditions interact with zoning decisions.
No.
Well, we were pressing with that, with uh, George Marshall's change of the building across some friendlies.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
No, I know.
Well, but, um, okay, so.
That was because I'm alive about. That George wanted to do it. So then, so that's what we just keep doing it.
Well, in the past, the, the last month, we considered the removal of the subsidies for E Vs enough to have another conversation about E Vs. So like market conditions in the vague sense like was considered recently.
Yeah.
What, um? These are rules that we have or, or just.
I'm, I'm saying the market, like calling us.
Very different situation.
So, uh, would anybody like to make a motion on whether or not this is different, uh, sufficiently uh, different or not?
I'd make a motion that I find it significantly different enough for us to consider the application in total.
I like to second that motion, Mr. Chairman. I, I second that motion that Bo made.
Okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion on that point?
Yeah, just a point of order. Um, if this motion fails, would a motion that the market conditions have changed be in order?
Well.
So if, if this, so what you're, because what you're saying is question number one, if you said to, if, if Bo's motion passes, then, then you can skip question two. If it doesn't, if, if this motion fails, then you have to move on to number two, in which you talk about the conditions that may change.
That's not my question. My, my question is Bo has made a motion that the application has changed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other possibility is that they, something else has changed with the application.
Right. And that's why it's two prontests.
It's, it's a different approach to part one. It's a different, you know, we could find either that the application is different or we could find that the surrounding conditions are different. And if you say yay to either one of those, then you can go on to the second question.
Right.
So my point is, since Bo has made a motion only that the application has changed and has not addressed the issue of anything else, would a motion of anything else be in order if Bo's motion fails? would a motion of anything else be in order if what if Bo's motion fails?
No, I mean, I think the the real, the 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 thing here is, is the approval being sought is the application itself before you substantially similar, that's problem one.
Yeah.
Then problem two is have there been a change of conditions like market conditions that would materially affect the commission's previous decision? So it's the.
I believe it's a different application.
So it's a two-prong, right, so so what's what's before you now is the application itself is significantly different and is is substantially altered from the previous application, that's the motion on the floor.
Yes.
If the, if it's affirmative that that is the case, then you don't need to ask the question about market conditions, you can just, you can discuss the limitations. But you skip that second piece. If you find that this, if if the the commission in a whole votes that it is not significantly different, then you go on to problem two. And problem two is that piece that says, has there been a change in conditions or other considerations that would materially affect the commission's previous decision?
Okay, but we, could we find that there's been a condition that affects our previous decision? But we still don't wanna reverse.
Yes, none of none of these two pieces.
The making, yeah, right, making a final decision on the application.
All you're, all you're asking in this two-prong test is whether you can go forward to consider the application on its merits after you've decided whether or not is it substantially similar?
We aren't considering it on its merits yet.
I I know that, I just don't know whether or not we're considering whether or not the conditions have changed.
Not yet.
No, no, it's not.
No.
Yeah. This is only, is the application significantly different from the, and substantially different from the previous application?
We aren't, we aren't doing the.
I actually three different questions.
There are.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I like to make. I like to. There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded.
It's already on the table, Eddie.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so we we got a fir-, Bo made a motion, I second it, so it's significantly different, so let's vote on it.
Well. I'll I'll do it when I'm ready.
Be quiet, Bo.
As I was getting ready to say before you interrupted me, I would like to call a vote. So all those in uh, who agree that this is uh, substantially different, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
But are that's not.
I mean.
Uh, one aye, and anybody abstaining? And one abstention.
We do, we'll follow the.
Okay, we're trying, we're trying to follow.
Okay. So you wanna do it in the rule call? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, Laurie, you'll do the rule call, so it's substantially different, not different or abstention.
The application substantially different.
Yes.
Okay. Michael Rossi.
I I don't vote.
You're no, I'm sorry, Bo Clark.
Yes.
Ellen Dogger.
Aye.
Eddie Albarino.
Aye.
Michael Florio.
Aye.
Jay Mandel.
I have seen.
Zach Flure.
Aye.
Dylan Walter.
Aye.
So that passes. Um, so we feel that uh, the commission is substantially different. We can ignore question two then about market conditions for going forward, we can consider market conditions when we're talking about whether or not we wanna make change that they're asking for, okay? So now we're, we need to discuss the fine merit.
Okay, well, I'll go first, Eddie. Um, I could read all the information that I read from the plan of conservation development that I found inconsistent with the prior one because it's all applicable to this one, so if you'd like me to go through them again, I will, but um, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think seven, it might be another page here. Seven pages of of specific areas where I find that this application is inconsistent with the existing plan of conservation development, and as I noted prior, those conditions are also reflected, although I guess we can't, you know, look at it too much, but those conditions are also reflected in the upcoming plan of conservation and development. I think for me, one of the most telling things is that this applicant came before us, when he applied for this permit, agreed to have first floor commercial uses here, which is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. It is it within our regulations, that's what we require. So if he made an error, that's his problem. You know, let him, let him eliminate some other parking, let him move something else, but you can't, we can't just, when somebody cries that they tripped over their thing, we can't go buy them a new pair of shoes, I mean, it's just.
Well, I I I I don't like um, blaming the applicant, but uh, what I do, what I do agree that um, this, you know, I I I um, would prefer to keep these as um, commercial properties, uh, um, because that's the way we had planned this whole division or, you know, whole complex was with that in there. And it, I think it was a uh, central part of what the original plan was.
And quite frankly, when we did that, the commercial portion of this is minimal. I mean, it's it's very small, because initially I think we wanted them on the, on all four of the the buildings up front. And we sacrificed and said, okay, no, two, two defines it, which still meets the regulation, it still was consistent with the P O C D. But now they wanna eliminate it altogether. And I just, I find it inconsistent with the P O C D, I find it inconsistent with the comprehensive town plan, although at that end, there's a lot of inconsistencies with the comprehensive town plan, it's just the way it works out, so, you know.
And I.
When we saw.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Uh.
My, not a lot, I have everybody else, so go ahead.
I I just, my comment is that I, when we had the application to eliminate the commercial on the upper level, that uh, I expected to see this one follow, um, it seems as if this applicant has been chipping away.
Yeah, I agree. It's pretty frightening, it's a crow. Trying to eat some crow down. Something I learned after, after pushing the the last application through, just the um, I, it's really, I don't know, I mean, we're surrounded by uh, motels that qualify section eight housing. It's like there is no room for business down there. If you, if somebody wanted to put in the business, say buy that vacant lot in front of Lantern or, it's just, I think it keeps the continuity of the subdivision a lot better to have this residential. Plus, there's a need for elderly people to have one single floor housing, um, this would add three units there, it's, I just, trust me, I'm all for commercial space in every one quarter, I just don't think it's there yet, it's it's.
Where do, where do we begin now? If we don't begin with this, where do we begin?
Change of the center of town.
Huh?
Change of the brakes for the center of town, so you can improve that base so that it can span from there.
I think, I think they're connected, I think that's, what I think this we want to achieve is that connectivity that this continues throughout. And as I stated before, inexpensive office space is not a bad thing for the town of Clinton. You know, it sounds counterproductive, but it's not.
Is the residential aspect upstairs tied to the commercial aspect downstairs? No, 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 okay.
I think uh, what Mike was saying before is exactly where my head's at as well, um, it, build the rest, and then if there's problem, that's when I really consider marketing, you know, marketing it for a year with the full development or and not have main issue, there's other, there's conditions that then I would consider some stuff, but this, at this point, it's so new and to to Ellen's point, like they just, it seems like it's been chipping away and like now it's not.
One important notation on them is that you're almost invited to come back without making any changes, the onus is on the applicant to make these viable. If they're not viable because of lack of parking, they still have room, they still can change that development to put in adequate parking to make these commercially viable spaces. I'm not talking about, you know, for retail use because they're clearly not, and nothing was ever intended for retail use because that would require much more parking, and that was not what the applicant came forward with, they they came forward with the parking uh, calculations based on on office space, that's what they use.
So Dylan's comments, though, to me sound that his comments are a valid thought, it's just, as Mike said, this isn't in its form, like, you can't, like, that's an applicable, and if that's still applied in its final form, there is.
But what I'm saying is, we we have to put the applicant on notice, that is, you can't keep the form the same way it is now, come back and say, look, I told you, you know, we, you know, we do, we could rent these out because you, because you did change what you identified as a problem.
But don't let the problem.
If they identify a problem and adjust the problem and then still can't get tenants, then maybe he has an argument, but he he identified the problem, he knows what the issue is. If they don't change it while they have the ability to change it right now, it's on them. I mean, we can't, we can't just throw away our goals that are stated so many times because of an application that that isn't, they seem to be chipping away, we've already made concessions. You know, there were, like as I said, there were four buildings that have frontage. And initially, I believe all four were supposed to have first floor commercial use.
Yeah.
We eliminated two of them. And only said, well, okay, two is still as consistent with the plan, it was a concession. I think a viable concession, I I didn't really have an issue with making that concession. I do have a big issue with just abandoning the whole thing, I mean, we have to, if our goal is to increase commercialization on Route One and draw people into our restaurants and draw people into our stores and our downtown to make them aware, we can't just, we can't depend on just the tenants. You know, these three or four or five tenants that might occupy these new residential uses, we need the you know, the professionals are gonna occupy these spaces, we need their customers to coming in from out of town to see what we have in Clinton. That's what's gonna promote our commercial space, and once that starts going, then we try to hopefully get the ball rolling to go down the road further. We can't just abandon it because, you know, I mean, and because it's still not built, like I mentioned before, it's hard to sell apples when you don't have them in the carton. You know, these buildings are up and done and the buildings were, you were, were already situated and set up as an office, much easier to rent it, and he's identified his own problem that he has to address the parking.
Mister Chairman.
Well.
Dylan's talking, I don't get to you either.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear him talking.
By having to keep the the original building on on the property, now you can't turn that into commercial because they have to be remain residential, so then the commercial gets stuck to the outside, it's not, if 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 we could do it in the perfect world, we'd obviously put it right on on the side of the driveway, so it's easy access in and out for people going to visit business. But having it stuck behind that original existing building, and then we granted the residential in the third building.
It's not really, it's not behind, it's on side.
Well, right, you still have to go behind the other one to get there. I mean, if if that building could have come down, you could have put parking right along the driveway for professional spaces instead of having to keep it there.
No, you, you have, look at the, look at all the shops on 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 Route One now in the center. There's no parking in front of Grand Pizza, you go behind, it's not a big deal.
Wouldn't necessarily say they're thriving, other than the pizza praise, but.
Well, but to say, that's, you know, that's not uncommon to have the parking behind, say, the structure, you know, it's maybe not ideal, but it's not uncommon, and again, you know, the applicant had the ability to to do that. They chose to proceed in this fashion.
They, they are not in danger of exceeding ground coverage if they wanted that ad.
And these main villages couldn't be in front of the building because that's prohibited in the district.
Right, but they have, they have grounds, they have access behind the buildings that would not exceed the ground coverage.
Just, I'm not sure if this building is built, but simply shifting this building to where the parking is here and shifting that parking to here solves the problem.
That's no parking, those are septic.
Oh, septic, okay, I could space.
Um, but the, you know, so there is, there is the opportunity to have more parking. Uh, it would, of course, require a new site plan approval.
But that would certainly meet the threshold, you know.
Yeah, I I think I'm prepared to make a motion.
I got my hand up for like ten minutes, so. I just wanna say, I mean, w- we're we're subsidizing, Bo, you gotta, you gotta be broad minded here. We're subsidizing the, that new restaurant with the sign plays and the library. We're we're subsidizing, our town is paying sixteen hundred dollars a month rent to make the, make that restaurant viable. If.
Twelve hundred.
No, sixteen hundred, so.
I'm the one at the council, it's twelve hundred.
Whatever, what's the point, Ed?
My point is, why is the town helping them to 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 make it viable? Uh, it, if the guy needs, if they can't rent, like, I I I would, Dylan, Dylan knows this area. Dylan is not, he's a smart guy when it comes to the uh, the the properties, you know, why, why are we so um, so against this? I don't understand. Dylan makes a very good point.
Mr. Plan, if we just worked, we, we just worked ten months.
I was with you both for the last year, but people make mistakes. People make mistakes, people make mistakes, people, the things change every day. Things change every day, you know, uh, that's why there's, there's so many buildings that are empty, you know, up and down Hartford. Hartford is completely empty, but I'm just saying, it's not the answer to co- commercial every day. I mean, there's empty buildings, go up and down Route One, go on the side of Post Office Square, there's empty buildings. I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, you're holding people's feet to the fire, you know, and that's there, it's on them, it's on them, it's on them. No, actually, it's on us, we're 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 the plan zoning, we try to help people. If people make a mistake, we can't burn their feet off.
That doesn't mean we abandon our plans because somebody else.
Bo, did you ever make a mistake, Bo? Did you ever make a mistake? I'm being honest, people make mistakes. I, I don't know, you guys do what you want, I'm I'm just saying, I, I mean, we, we're, why are we subsidizing the that 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 restaurant? Why?
I I don't think that has anything to do with this.
It has something to do with it because nothing's go- was going in there, so we're subsidizing that building, why are we doing that? What, why don't we just loo- look at, there's a vape shop, there's empty buildings over there, I mean, it's just go down, up and down Route One. It's, go ahead, I mean, it's ridiculous.
If I go up and down Route One, I see vacant residential units as well.
Okay. So it's harder to do commercial today, it's harder, but I own the business. I I just sold my building, I sold my business, I uh, mine was a mixed-use property, I had a apartment downstairs and a barber shop upstairs, I know what it's like to own a building, I know what it's like to own a business. Uh, you know, people, people don't, people don't pay me, I I paid for it, you know? But I'm just saying, the guy needs a hand and we're just shunning him because he made that decision to go that way. We just can't be that way, you you wanna be that way, it's fine. I'm just saying, I I'm not voting for one.
I I'm prepared to make a motion to deny this application.
Second it.
Well, I I think Bo was probably already getting there, what we mean collective reasons on the record.
I find it inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development, I find it inconsistent with our zoning regulations.
Can you hold your, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Jack, this question.
Yeah, didn't Ellen mention something about approving?
Yeah, the problem is that if a motion to deny fails, that then the application is approved. And because of that, it can be cleaner to make a motion to approve, and then the first person making, you know, discussing can put all of the arguments against on the table, and then you vote to approve, if it fails, then nobody there's no head scratching about what happened, that it just is a parliamentary approach, and I I would offer that comment to the chair.
I will, I will, I was follow that up with the procedurally, absolutely. What we found in the courts recently is that the commission does need to state its collective reasons for denial. So if one member puts those things out there and that member votes against, but others may have other reasons, so there there should be some findings of collective, you know, it didn't pass because of the following reasons and and sort of just caught up by that.
Bo's motion covers the.
Which is a motion to deny.
It's a motion to deny.
But it gave us, gave reasons.
It gave reasons, okay, so a a vote of aye is a vote to deny.
Correct.
But if this does not, if that, if the motion to deny fails, then this motion is. But, if this does not, if that, if the motion to deny fails, then this motion is approved.
Is approved automatically.
Does everybody understand?
Dylan, uh, is this within the proximity, the radius to the train station to qualify for transit-oriented development?
It's usually half mile or a mile, um, the plan that we did through the RiverCon does talk about some sort of spoken wheels. And sort of what's on bus routes and connecting, but even this is, is getting far out of that footprint.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, uh, all those.
We do, we do a roll call.
Yes.
We do a roll call, okay, uh, so we're going to, voting again. Um, this is a vote to deny, so if you say, yes, you're voting to deny. No, you're, you don't want it to be approved. Okay, go ahead, uh, do the rule call, please.
Bo Clark.
Aye.
Ellen Dogg.
I'm voting aye to deny.
Eddie Albarino.
I vote yes to approve.
That's not, that's a no.
That's a no vote, yeah.
No, okay. Michael Florio.
Aye.
Jay Mandel.
Aye.
Zach Flure.
Aye.
Dylan Walter.
Nay.
Yeah, Susan has seated, so.
Oh, sorry, Susan.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that, um, the motion to deny has, uh, passed. We are not considering if, or the application is approved. Okay, um. Item eight, committee report, the P O C D subcommittee, um. I know we got comments back from, was it RiverCon?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, which were very positive, the only negative they had is they wanted us to define what T O B means. The first time we used that acronym. So other than that, um, what are we waiting on, uh, we need?
Abby, what's your feeling on that? Should we amend or wait till other?
I think what we would do is, so I, I talked to, to David, um, we can go ahead and be prepared with that. We can call it out like a sidebar, and, and shouldn't, that really won't change the substance of the plan, it's really just the definition, so that's. It's an incredibly positive review, um, they did come back, um, and I forwarded to David today with some grammatical errors they found as they were doing their review. But again, so I'm sorry, I thought you. But those are minor, and so, but what we do is wrap everything up in the final version, but we're still waiting for the deep comments to come back. Which I'm hopeful will be here end of this, this week early next, um, according to our reviewer Fred Oliver, and then, um. I will be going to the, uh, town council the morning of December third, if anybody is interested, I mean, you're more than welcome. But I'll be asking for official, um, endorsement from them on that date. And that would be leading us into the public hearing on December fifteenth, so please keep holding that Monday, because that will be. The public hearing followed by a special meeting to adopt, so we, we definitely need to make sure we have a forum for that, that night.
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, that's our, that's our day, we've so far met all of our deadlines and everything else that we need, um, and we're just for mark us toward that date. And then we hear our Christmas party.
We'll bring some tequila, so you don't have to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, I have that on there already, I've already canceled another meeting for it, so, okay. Um, any other questions for, I think it's going, I'm really was pleased with those comments.
It, it's pretty astounding, yeah, that those.
Yeah, but, you know. Yeah, that's good, okay, um, correspondence and bills? Nothing, okay, uh, adjournment? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those stating we're adjourned at nine thirty-four.